February 3rd, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is discussion of the draft 2021 Planning Docket and Draft 2021 Commission Work Plan. We'll also discuss the 2020 Docket status and time permitting, spend a little time talking about what work, what could be improved in 2021. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for provided comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the Audience Comment section of the meeting, and email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. This is the commission's first meeting using Zoom, so far so good. Many of us have used this platform before. I'll ask your patience as we work through any challenges and all learn the procedures and mute and unmute at the proper times. So at this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Mr. Peestrop. Commissioner Kerd.
Here.
Commissioner Alderks.
Present.
And Commissioner Augustin. All of our commissioners are present and accounted for. In addition, we have Community Development Director Mike Cotterman and Senior Planners Dave Boyd and Nathan Lamb, also in attendance. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And if you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the stand off as there is a delight. For the commissioners, specific breaks, calling on members who wish to speak. I'll see how the ribbon works on this, whether you're all there or not, if I can recognize you. And if you want to speak, please indicate by holding up your yellow card or otherwise getting my attention, and it'll help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. In keeping with Governor Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 2028 regarding public hearings, gatherings, and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. I haven't seen any, but Director Cotterman, would you let us know if we have any comments?
We received no comments, Mr. Chair, and I'm showing no one in the attendee list at this time to speak this evening.
All right, then we will move on to our next agenda item, the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the January 20th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Alderks.
I motioned to approve the minutes from last meeting.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Todd.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second on the minutes of the January 20th meeting. Is there any discussion, any needed modifications to those minutes? Seeing no indication, I'll ask, hold favor of the minutes? We have unanimous approval of the minutes, so we shall move on. New business. We have any new business?
No new business tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right. So then we will move right on to the agenda item for tonight's meeting, the discussion of the 2021 Planning Docket, the Draft Commission Work Plan, and a review of the 2020 Docket. So with that, would staff like to lead us through?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to start us out, and then Nathan and Dave are going to pick up from there, and then we'll wrap up talking more about the work program for the Planning Commission for the year. And this evening, let me share my screen and get the presentation open. This'll be my first test. That is not the screen that I was trying to share with you. Let's try that again. I'm hoping that's visible to everyone.
Yes. Now, I'm going to comment. I see very few commissioners on my screens, so I hope people do want to comment.
So if you click on the window that's showing people, there's a box that's like a grid.
Yes.
If you click on that, that'll show you, I believe, a few more people, but it will obscure some of the screen.
Yeah, I've got four people, you and I being two of them, so there's only two other boxes.
Okay.
So.
I have.
But we can.
I have six, but most of them are staff, so that doesn't really help either. Well, we'll keep looking.
Okay.
We'll pause between speakers and see if there are any questions as we go along.
Sounds good.
Okay, so this evening, we want to talk about the draft 21 Planning Docket. This will be going to the City Council in a couple of weeks. This is an updated version of what the commission saw back in December, which was a preliminary draft. The main difference tonight being we have prioritized, we've made some additions and edits to it, and also added staff hours so that we could get an estimate and figure out what we would believe we can accomplish this year. So there is no formal action by the commission. You do not make a recommendation on this, but we are looking for your feedback and your comments, particularly as they relate to the priorities. Or if there's anything that we've missed that you had asked to be included in this, we want to know about that as well, and we will convey those then to the council as part of our presentation to them on the 16th. We'll do just a quick review of the docket from 2020. Again, the status of those, we did that back in December, but just a quick reminder of that. And then we'll go through with Nathan and Dave, we'll go through an overview of the Draft Planning Docket and get your feedback on that, and then we'll talk about the work program, specifically those things on the docket that will be coming to the commission at some point this year and the approximate timeframe that we see that happening in. So first of all, in terms of the 2020 docket, you do have this in your packet as attachment two, and I'm not going to share all of that with you, but I just want to highlight the main things that we completed this past year that were some major projects that we were able to complete. Certainly, the Canyon Park Subarea and Development Regulations consumed a lot of not only staff time, but a lot of the planning commission's time this past year. That was a major effort, an important effort, and one that we were successful in getting through the council and adopted in December before the end of the year. There were also several parking code amendments that came to you, and this was related to some of the state legislation requirements as far as reducing parking for certain uses. There was one piece that came out of that that is, shows up on the docket for this year that we'll talk about briefly. There were also changes to the Title 22, which is the Landmark Preservation Board title, and how we, how we work with historic designations and particularly requests for demolitions or other alterations. And then also some changes to the downtown regulations regarding the historic preservation of the buildings that we have, primarily in the Main Street area. Some Housing Code Amendments regarding affordable housing, and Dave's going to talk some more about what we have on the docket for this year. And then also the Public Space Code Amendments, which was another item that we spent quite a bit of time working through with the commission. They were a rather complicated issue that we were able to work out some good solutions to that and get that through the commission and the council for adoption before the end of the year, and that is now in place. So a little bit about the why we do the docket and how we approach it. So the information that you have in Attachment 1 shows the source, so this talks about whether it's something that we're required to do typically by state law, the Growth Management Act, most of the time, but not always. Maybe a federal requirement in some cases, a couple of years ago, you recall, we had a lot of work that we were doing on small wireless facilities. That was a federal regulation, a mandate that we had to deal with, and sometimes it's case law, court cases that have come down that we have to alter our codes to comply with. Then we look at what are the council priorities? Are there certain things that the council has identified in discussions or formal workshops with them that we know are high priorities for them? And in past years, that has been affordable housing and Canyon Park, and our presumption at this point is that those will still be high priorities for the council. Then we look at everything else that's on the list, and these may have come from private requests, they may have been commission requests in the past, they may have been things that the council has identified in the past that did not come to a higher level as far as getting those done, or the things that the staff has identified as we work through the code, we find some challenges or things that need to be updated or frankly just fixed because they're not working the way that they're intended to. So sometimes there are some new things that get added to the list as well. So we take all of those, we create that long list. We do take things off the list on occasion when we get them done, which is a nice feeling, but there are always things that get added to the list, so it always seems to be around 20 to 25 items in total. And then we look at how much time we have in terms of our staff resources, and that's basically Dave and Nathan and a very little portion of my time. So it's their main focus on the work that they do and then some of my involvement. We do not count hours from other departments or other staff within the Community Development Department that may be helping out on these. So we're really just looking at the main, the project managers, if you will. So we estimate the number of hours we have, we look at estimates of how many hours we think it will take to do the different tasks, and then we see just how much we think we can accomplish based on those priorities that we've identified. So at this point, I will, before I turn it over to Nathan, I'm going to stop sharing and see if there are just any questions about any of the background, what we're doing and why and how and all of that. Everyone looks mesmerized, so I think we'll go back to the presentation. See if I can get, okay. So at this point, I will turn it over to Nathan.
All right, thanks. Nice to be with you all again. So I'll get us rolling on our 2021 docket with item one, which is the critical area of amendments that you all made recommendations on at your last meeting, and this is going forward to council for them to take action in a couple of weeks here. Our second item is Comp Plan Amendments. So we've got three subtopics here, so for the Bike Plan Update, this is going to be coming back to you later this year as a Comp Plan Amendment, a Comp Plan Amendment, excuse me, for, as part of the annual amendment cycle. So Public Works currently has a draft that's adding several new proposed facility, bike facilities, making new connections to destinations in Bothell. So we'll have more for you as we consult with Public Works later this year. Item 2B is the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. We're deferring this to 2022, and at that point, we will be consulting with Parks to make sure that the new plan that recently got approved and adopted is in alignment with the corresponding Comp Plan element. And then Item 2C are the private amendment requests, and we're just deferring those to 2024 for the periodic Comp Plan update. So moving on to Item 3, for buildable lands, I believe you all had a comprehensive overview of this back in December. But, so as you know, this, these are, these reports are due in June, and it's, of course, county-driven projects, biking in Snohomish County, they have their own methodologies and timelines, so we just continue to coordinate with them to get us to that June milestone of having that report complete. For number four is the, are the growth targets, which we're saying we want to be ready for by quarter three, and then number four is the county-wide planning policies that are being revised to align with Vision 2050, and we're saying that's going to be in quarter three and quarter four. So I skipped over some bullet points here. So for number four, the growth targets are, they intersect with number three, the Buildable Lands Report, but it's separate in that there's different processes and timelines. And then for the CPPs, those are foundational to the 2024 update, and four and five really, are all of these really inform, you know, our process and content for the 2024 periodic plan update. So moving on to, we're going to skip number six, and Dave is going to be talking about that, so I'm going to go to seven.
And Nathan, if I could, sorry to interrupt, I forgot. So the things that are highlighted in green, we'll talk about these a little bit more. These are items that will come to the Planning Commission, so we'll talk about those also in the context of the work program. Thanks, Nathan.
Yep, sure. So for our Canyon Park implementation, we've got five subitems that we want to accomplish in 2021. The first one is the MFTE program. This was carried over from last year, and it's in, as you know, an important part of the Canyon Park Plan implementation, but it's going to be a citywide program as well. The next one is the PSRC certification. We've started that process for the Canyon Park Plan, and it's essentially just a plan reporting tool that PSRC sends out and makes sure it's really a checklist and a little bit of narrative where they can see that our plan is implementing, you know, the framework for regional growth centers, and also it's a requirement if we want to apply for any transportation-related funding through PSRC. The next one is the Bonus Incentive Program, and that's going to be coming to you guys for recommendation later this year. I think if I remember correctly, you guys have had some conversation about what these incentives could be, but it's just to achieve the kind of development that is laid out in the Canyon Park Plan, and we'll be making this a priority, but I, but we haven't really gotten into the details yet. I think I'm going to be PM for this, and I'm just still trying to wrap my mind around the plan right now and digest all of the material, so we'll get there. And the next one is TDR with Sound Transit for their bus-based north station that they want to put in Canyon Park. So currently, we're working out details with partners at Sound Transit for coming to an adopted, like, formal work plan. So we're still in the scoping phase, and then also a formal agreement and letter of concurrence. And then finally, for 2021, we have integrating the street standards, and we'll be working with Public Works on that just to integrate those into the construction design manual, and that's going to help streamline the development review process. And lastly, there's, there's three items that we are deferring to 2022 and beyond. The first one is the commercial linkage fee. The second one is we're deferring the site improvements, and I believe you guys have had some extensive conversation about that last year. And then finally, the Transportation Demand Management Program that we'll be coordinating with Public Works about. So hopefully that, those were coherent overviews, and I'll pass it to my fellow planner, Dave.
First, we'll see if there are any questions about those before we go on.
Commissioner Kerd, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
I would, thanks. This is Karsten. I have a quick question about the growth targets and other plans associated with the buildable lands analysis. My question is about the census data being kind of pushed off a little bit at a federal level. How is that impacting our targets for buildable lands process with the counties?
Do you want me to take that, Nathan? So the, it doesn't really impact us in terms of buildable lands because that's based on local data and the amount of development that we've seen and the level of development that we've seen within each jurisdiction, so that's a local reporting. The growth targets are affected to a degree by the census data because that's used by the Office of Financial Management, which is a state agency, OFM. So they generate forecasts for the entire state about every five years. They do forecasts, and they go 20, 30, 40 years out sometimes, and they do look at census data as part of that. So to that, to the extent that they use the census data, it has some impact on their analysis and their forecasts. They've already issued forecasts, so we're using that information. They do it at the county level, and then the counties work with the cities to allocate that growth to each of the jurisdictions based on the framework that's established by the Vision 2050. So that's the shorthand version of that. So short answer, some, not much. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none, let's proceed.
Okay. So, Dave?
All right, yeah, I'll jump in, and just to add on that, Mike's response, OFM also does a population estimate every year for all the municipalities, so that'll be coming out in April, I believe. So, and those do get adjusted when the census, the 10-year census comes out. I think this one is in the works, it'll, it'll go forward regardless of any census delays. So the sixth item, we skipped over the sixth item, which is Housing Strategy Implementation for 2021. We, Planning Commission just finished a recommendation on amendments that were related to House Bill 1923. Those are the housing and related transportation amendments that you recommended on the 20th. Those also go to the council on the 16th of this month, so we're looking forward to adding that along with the critical areas to the 2020 accomplished items shortly. Multi-family tax exemption, once again, we're, that's really our top priority in terms of housing strategies for this year. We had to put it on hold because we needed to utilize our, our housing staff from Arch to help us through the Canyon Park. Plan Development Regulations and the Affordable Housing component of that, but we've started to meet again on the, on the multi-family tax exemptions for the city, citywide, and there will be some, some focus on how those mesh into the framework that was established in Canyon Park for those. The two housing items that we're anticipating coming to Planning Commission with in 2021 are, one is related to micro apartments, which is also related to another downtown plan implementation task, Task 8A, so I'll get into that a little bit more then. And the other is to continue to work on reducing barriers to accessory dwelling units and other missing middle housing. Of course, the housing amendments are going to take one step in that direction by allowing duplexes on corner lots in single-family zones, but there are other housing types that we want to look at and try to determine where we'll get the biggest bang for our buck, whether that's cottage housing or expanding the allowances for duplexes beyond just corner lots. Those are some things that we'll be discussing with Arch and bringing back to Planning Commission this year. The, some, some of the, those will likely also be deferred to 2021, and likely the cottage housing provisions and other missing middle types of housing. So that's really, it's not that we're so much that we're deferring, but it's, it's going to be an ongoing task, and it'll take us some time to get through that. Yeah, go ahead. Downtown Subarea Implementation, this is actually one of the property owner requests. We have a request from a property owner along Beardsley Avenue to either remove or revise the three-story overlay in the general downtown corridor and combine that with an affordable housing requirement or incentive. We're just starting to dig into that there and figure out exactly what part of the general downtown, that three-story overlay, it'll apply to, if not all of it, and work through some of the other issues with that particular development proposal, including how we deal with micro housing projects where, they're also known as residential suite developments, where a number of individual micro apartments that have very basic kitchens, a sink and a microwave and an undercounter refrigerator, are grouped around a shared kitchen, and, and the way our code works in terms of parking requirements and some other requirements, it doesn't really address how we should handle those kinds of developments. So we'll be looking at that, and in particular, they're, they're looking for, combined with the affordable housing provisions, some parking reductions similar to the ones that we passed last year. And then we don't know yet if, if we'll need to come back to Planning Commission on this one, but another step towards the 2020 Comp Plan Update is a nomination of the downtown subarea as a candidate for a county-wide center. This was something that we were anticipating doing, but the county has moved up the timeline for that, they're expecting applications for this later this year, August, September, and so we're, we're waiting for more input from them about how that process will work, and then we definitely want to get, get that into the, into the hopper for future consideration. And deferring, once again, to 2022 or beyond is Parking Management Plan for the downtown subarea. It's something that was envisioned in the plan, but to date hasn't, hasn't been funded, and we're, we're keeping it on, on the docket as a future item, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to get to that. Couple items that, or one item that will go directly to council are having, have to do with the North Shore School District Impact Fee Collection, and we're, we are planning to do that this year, but that will go directly to council. And then some miscellaneous code amendments, when Planning Commission made its recommendations on the parking reductions. near frequent transit, we, there was interest in expanding the radius to a half mile. But there was also reluctance to do that beyond what the state is requiring without getting some sort of affordable housing requirement. So that's another thing that we're going to be working with Arch to do the analysis and bring that back to Planning Commission. And then related to the transfer of development rights programs that Nathan mentioned for Canyon Park, we're, we're needing to do some more research on on county PDR programs and so that we can mesh our provisions with with those and also to look at other, beyond Canyon Park, how we might be able to use transfer development right programs. And then there are a number of other amendments that are on the list, particularly housekeeping, where we consider housekeeping amendments that we have deferred or that we'll tackle as time allows going forward. With that, oh, and then I think this is the last one. Shoreline Master Program Amendments, we passed it for the Critical Areas Code. The, some FEMA amendments related to developments in floodplains this last year. But that brought up some, the need to do some changes to Title 13, the shoreline code, to be consistent with those. So that's top priority there. Then there were some recommendations from the stormwater master planning work that's being done for some streamlining of the shoreline code. So we'd like to tackle those as well. And then there has been an ongoing request to look at our buffer enhancement incentives. And and we're, those are on the list as well, possibly to tackle this year. That could go over into next year. So these will all require reconvening the shorelines board, which we anticipate doing in the fall. And then they may, that work may continue into 2022. Oh, any questions on any of that?
So commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Aldrichs?
Try the little raise hand button. I don't know how well that works for you. But I know as we learn to use Zoom together, that might might be useful. So I I do have a question about the micro apartments. Is there, is there a reason that that on the the docket that micro apartments are being prioritized before cottage housing? And what is that reason?
The main reason is that we've had so far at least two proposals to build micro apartments. And we realized that our code doesn't really address them very effectively. So we need it to be able to process those, those pending applications. And they are, we've done some research. We toured a project in Shoreline and they are, you know, I don't know if they're generally considered to be in that missing middle category, but they are a form of of affordable housing that even when they're market rate, they are relatively affordable because of the the reduced size. So we do think it is a valuable tool to have in our affordable housing toolbox.
And any, any proposals for cottage housing that have come across your desk?
None that, none that have really, there's been some talk of potential for cottage housing in certain areas, but none of those have moved forward. And another reason we want to research that a little bit further is that we are aware that some jurisdictions have have adopted cottage housing regulations and just haven't seen much cottage housing development. We want to make sure that we're, that we're using our time wisely there.
All right, last question. So would you say that that like the market interest is kind of driving the priorities in this case? And is it possible for the Planning Commission to weigh in on on doing things differently than what seemed like? It obviously seems obvious to, you know, to go with what the market is wanting to do. But is that something that the Planning Commission might be able to suggest to prioritize differently?
You can always suggest and offer your priorities. And and the cottage housing was one that was added last year by the Planning Commission. We just haven't had the, haven't had the bandwidth to tackle that one. And there hasn't been the urgency because we haven't really had that much interest in that. So, yeah, you can say that it's it's being market driven, but it's it's really driven by our need to be able to to respond to these evolving housing types that that we are seeing come forward.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there commissioner questions or comments? So a question for clarification. What is the significance of being a countywide center? I'm assuming it's King County we're referring to.
Well, it's part of, yeah, it would be in King County. This one would be. But it's part of the regional framework, and it's similar to regional growth centers. It gives you extra points when you're applying for funding for improvements, typically transportation project improvements.
And this would lay on top of the regional growth center that we already are?
No, it's a, it's a separate designation.
Though the Regional Growth Center was established in the 90s, I believe, and the, before my time here, but my understanding is that King County had as many regional growth centers as they were willing to to handle at the time. And and Snohomish County didn't. And the Canyon Park development was relatively new. And and so we, we were able to get that designated as a Snohomish County Regional Growth Center at that time. And a big part of the effort, as you know, that we made over the last two, three years has been to position that to retain that regional growth center status. But as we've worked on the downtown plan, it has seemed to us that that the downtown also is a pretty important growth center for the city of Bothell. And 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 we would, there are projects that we would like to see funded in downtown that having that designation would would benefit. So, so it's something that we've kind of had our eyes on for some time, and we knew this opportunity was coming up. The process has been accelerated, so that's why we're mobilizing to take advantage of that.
If I could just add on to that, this is an outgrowth of the Centers Framework Update that Peachtree Regional Council did a few years ago. At the time, the, one of the challenges they had is in terms of the transportation funding. There's the regional transportation funding, which the regional growth centers qualify for. And then each county had its own pot of funds that it could use, and they were granting extra points for centers. But there were no criteria for those centers. So it could be a fruit stand and a convenience store that had been designated locally as a center, and it'd get additional points. So they were looking for some consistency across the four counties. Some counties had centers, some didn't. King County did not. They recognize that there are local activity areas, but there there's no official recognition or designation of those. So this is an attempt to create some consistency among the four counties. And Snohomish County will be doing something very similar. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like either. So this is our, our opportunity to acknowledge that, as Dave was saying, downtown's an important center within Bothell, but also for the county. So they're, they may grow up to be regional growth centers at some point, but not necessarily.
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Aldrichs here. So what are some of the features of a countywide growth center? And and how might that integrate Bothell into King County, like, transportation? And and kind of the features of of what that would, that would mean for Bothell?
You want me to take that, or you want me to try?
You want to start?
So there are specific criteria, just like there are for regional growth centers. So there are minimum activity units or whatever the county equivalent might be for that. There are criteria regarding area, the mix of uses, very similar types of criteria as the Regional Council has for regional growth centers, but at a, at a smaller scale. The county may put some additional criteria on that. Part of the challenge here, as Dave was talking about, is the county, King County hasn't established any of this yet. There are certain criteria that were established through the regional framework that all the counties will follow. But each county can also add their own criteria to that. And we don't yet know what that's going to be in King County. So what they're asking for at this point is not, would not be an official designation. They're, they want to know which centers would be candidates for the designation. And that's, so it's a much lesser effort that we have to put forth in order to get that in by August. And then that will help us in the next round of funding as a candidate center. And then we'll find out more as they finalize the countywide planning policies, what other criteria we have to meet, and whether we want to proceed with that.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Are there commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none, let's proceed onward.
Okay. So I've got, I think, just a couple more slides on this part of it. So I mentioned earlier, oops, sorry, I need to move the screen so I can see the rest of the slide. So we mentioned earlier that we look at the hours available and how those might be used. This is just an accounting of of those hours and how they've been allotted to the different tasks. So the mandatory tasks, you can see, all told, we think it would take about 480 hours, and we're devoting 420 to that. The council priorities, we're looking at around 1,300, 1,400 hours devoted to that. Another 800 for optional tasks. Those are the ones that, basically everything after number seven. Seven through, or eight through 11. And then you see how many hours we have total. If we did everything, we would need about 5,300 hours to do that. And we have about 2,500 available between the three of us. So you get a sense of the level of effort that that we think is required. I will tell you, as my staff often reminds me, that I am notorious for underestimating the number of hours that it takes to do these, which is why some of these end up moving into the next year and taking a little longer to get through the process than we had anticipated. But it it helps us in terms of relative effort and and what we anticipate we're going to need. So this also identifies the new tasks that we have that are, excuse me, included in all those three categories. And you can see those are count for about 1,200 of those hours. So next is the work program, and I can go into that or see if there's any other discussion about any of these or the priorities. Commissioner Aldrichs asked earlier about priorities. One of the purposes of tonight's meeting is if there is a consensus or a majority of the commission that would like to ask the council to reprioritize something, that's some of the feedback we're looking for this evening. So I don't know if you wanted to discuss those now or if you want to run through the work program first.
Why don't we, I see at least one commissioner wants to discuss something else. So let's, let's talk about that now as a name impact work program. And I guess, you know, keep in mind that adding something should also carry with it consideration of property as a lower priority. So with that, Commissioner Gustafson, I think you were indicating an interest.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. My question is about the multifamily tax exemption. Is this coming from council as a priority? Is this coming from developers as a priority? The reason why I'm asking is because I feel like it can do a lot of good, but it also costs the city tax, some fraction of the tax base. So I'm wondering who is, who's pushing for it?
I can start with that. We have got, had support from the development community, from the regional realtors groups. But there's also a lot of support from the affordable housing, from affordable housing advocates. And this is one area where most of the surrounding communities and most of the Arch communities already have multifamily tax exemption programs. So and they find that it's a tool that has been effective in creating creating affordable housing and durable affordable housing. It, it's, I guess, similar to the mandatory affordable housing provisions. It is a, an effective way to get at the in that 70 to 80% of area median income housing that serves those. So, but we are also looking, as we develop this, at ways to use an MFT program to layer onto existing and and future affordable housing requirements to get at those lower affordability levels. So, so it it is a tool that that we think would be very useful to have.
And just to piggyback on that, I would say that it has been a priority of the council as well, based on the discussions that we've had with them when it comes to affordable housing programs. And I think in large part because this one has the potential to really be one of the more effective tools that's available to local government. As Dave said, it's used by a lot of other cities, particularly Arch cities on the east side. And it's one that has been a priority of the council in terms of implementation of the housing strategy since they adopted that a couple of years ago. So we had, it was on the list of priorities last year, and as Dave said, we sort of had to put that on hold for a little bit. So we want to get back to that, get it on the books. We think it'll be very effective in in helping to implement not only Canyon Park, but the overall affordable housing strategy for the city. And if I could just respond to one thing you said about the the city's tax base. The way that it works, it, it is not designed to lower the tax base. What, what cities give up basically is increased tax revenue from the increased value of the property. So it's, it is a little more neutral, revenue neutral in that sense. And it does give a tax break on more than just the city property tax. It's also the state and county.
So for jurisdictions with the MFT in place, are they collecting data on effectiveness, how many units are brought online? And is the city also planning to keep track of the effectiveness of this program?
I don't know. Do they, Dave?
Yeah, and I believe in their, sort of their MFT 101 presentation, they they talk about that, about how many units in their, in in the Arch cities have been created through the MFT program. And and they do monitoring. All of these units have to have a covenant that runs with the the project, with the land, and And, and, and Arch does track how those perform over the years. And make sure, make sure that they, they do continue to comply.
Arch administers the program for the cities, for the Arch member cities. And I believe there's a, I don't know that they track effectiveness so much as they just, it's more of an inventory. But I seem to recall there are some surveys that go out periodically from the state that are more tracking, you know, how much it's used.
Yeah.
That'll certainly be interesting as the issue come to for us.
We have heard from some developers that they would be interested in, in using it. I don't, I, I couldn't say at this point that it would make the difference in terms of whether or not they would do the project. But they are interested in, in using that tool. And I know when we put it in place in Bellevue, probably six, seven years ago, it wasn't used for the first few years. It's only been the last probably five years that it's really started to get more attention and, and used by, by developers.
We do have at least one developer that's looking at two different projects that, that does say that it's key for them to make those projects pencil. And, and they're hoping to get this quite soon, so that they can move forward with those applications.
Any other commissioner comments, questions? Seeing none, let's proceed.
Okay, so I'm going to jump into the work program. So one thing I will note, in addition to the, the green highlights, those are the items that I mentioned that would be coming to the commission sometime this year as part of your work program. There are other things, obviously, that may not require commission action, but, you know, we'll certainly want to keep you informed of things that are, that are happening that were good information for you as you're considering other things that, that are part of your work program. Also, the, the division of presentation tonight was intentional because Nathan is going to be focusing primarily on implementation of Canyon Park and things that are related to the comprehensive plan, working toward our update in a few years. And Dave will continue to work on downtown and affordable housing. There may be a little bit of trading back and forth there. But that's the general division of labor that, that I envision at this point. So January's happened, you're familiar with that. This month, we've got the docket, the work program. And as we were talking a little bit before the meeting started, I was hoping we would get the UDEV students to do their presentation on their report for the commission this month. I had offered them both dates, the 3rd and the 17th. As of today, I still have not heard back. So I'm continuing to try to connect with them and see if we don't get them this month, we can add them to March as well. Because as you can see, we have, we have space on the agenda coming up. And that is something that I do want to note for the work program because of the nature of many of the things that we're doing this year that don't require commission action. We have fewer items on the work program. So we've tried to, to spread them out in a way that brings them in a reasonable fashion, reasonable time and, and level of, of involvement of the commission. But as you know from past experience, things get delayed, some things get moved around. So we may, there may be some meetings when we don't have anything for the agenda, or we decide to cancel one meeting and combine some things on others. But certainly we will, we will talk about those and give you as much notice as possible. So in March, we really are anticipating kicking off a couple of things. Dave, coming to you with code amendments for the micro housing and the general downtown corridor overlay. Those are closely related, as he mentioned in his presentation. So we wanted to introduce those amendments to the commission, can let you know a little bit more background, what the, the intent is in that, and get your initial feedback in any direction as we proceed with the, the analysis on that. As Nathan mentioned in his presentation, the bonus incentive program is one of the priorities for Canyon Park implementation. As you recall, that's one of the things that we worked on with the commission last year that we didn't get to finish, to include in the plan. But we had some good discussion and some initial direction on that. So we want to bring that back in March to kind of recap where we left off, get that confirmed with the commission, and then talk about next steps and how we want to proceed with that. So that's the first quarter. And believe it or not, with this meeting, we're halfway through the first quarter in terms of commission meetings. So the second quarter, April, May, and June, we will have two new members on our commission, so anticipating that we will do a new member orientation. And in the past, we've done those before a commission meeting. If there's interest on the part of other commissioners, then we may just try to fold it into a regular agenda item and do a, maybe a shorter version of that. We can talk about that a little bit later on. This is one of those items, the growth targets and the CPPs, the countywide planning policies. As Nathan mentioned, those are going through the different processes at the two counties. That doesn't require any action by the commission, but it informs the work that we're going to be doing later on. So we'll, we'll give you an update on those. We're anticipating that in April, depending on when we get information from the counties. Continued discussion, probably more in-depth discussion at that point on the micro housing and the GDC overlay. Likewise, with the bonus incentive program for Canyon Park. So typically what we try to do is we'll have an introductory discussion with the commission, introduce the, the amendment or topic, get a general overview of that and initial reactions from the commission, any direction or questions that you might have. Then we come back with our initial analysis, have more discussion about that, and then follow that with then if, if we're ready with the public hearing and recommendation from the commission or additional discussion if we think that's necessary, which in the case of the micro housing and the GDC overlay, we're anticipating that there may be some need for additional discussion in May on that. That's one where I think we're also going to have to take a closer look at what our, our public outreach efforts are. Because we know, especially with the GDC overlay, there are going to be some, some questions and, and maybe some concerns around changes to that in the downtown area. Also give you a briefing and probably in May, again, this is our best estimate on that countywide center candidate application. We hope and expect that we will have more information about what they're looking for at that point. And then if Sound Transit is ready to move forward on the TDR code amendments for Canyon Park, we'll get started on that as well and kind of give you an overview of, of the scope and what we anticipate for that. Then in June, continued discussion on the bonus incentive program for Canyon Park. That's one that I, I'm not sure the commission will have a lot of discussion about that, but it's, I think, one that's fairly complicated based on our work so far. And it may take a little bit more analysis. And just also trying to get time with Arch staff because of everything else they're working on, because they, they need to be a part of this. And we hope to have the GDC and the micro housing code amendments ready for public hearing and recommendation at one of your June meetings. For July, the parking code amendments, this is the market rate housing, the quarter mile versus half mile, and whether we can do mandatory affordable as part of that, kind of finishing up some of the work that, that was done last year. Continued discussion on the TDR code amendments. August break, as usual, unlike last year with, when we were in the throes of Canyon Park and anticipating some August meetings, I don't think we will need those this year. Then in September, talking then, getting into the comp plan amendments, so the bike plan. If we need to do a comp plan amendment for the downtown countywide center, that we would fold it in at that time. At this point, I don't know if that will be necessary. At some point, we will have to include that in the comp plan, but I'm not sure if we'll need to do that this year. Then, then the TDR, we hope will be ready for public hearing and recommendation at that time in September. And then the, the last quarter of the year, the comp plan amendments, we need, that is part of the annual amendment cycle, so we need to wrap those up by the end of the year. So we would do the, the hearing and recommendations in October. Likewise, on the parking code amendments, we think that those should be ready. And not anticipating those should take a lot of time because there's really been a lot of discussion by the commission already on those. And then any ADU code amendments that we're picking up and starting to work on at that point, we would bring back to the commission to, again, sort of recap and, and re-energize that, that discussion. And then November, start to talk more about missing middle, really setting ourselves up for next year. Already talking about 2022 and, and sort of the next steps and, and what, what the focus needs to be on the work program in '22 regarding missing middle housing. And then also briefing on the updates to the countywide planning policies. Because again, as Nathan mentioned, those are really foundational to the work that we're going to be doing on the '24 update for our, our own comprehensive plan. And then finally, in December, wrapping up the ADU, any ADU code amendments, if we have any at that point. Maybe some other things that we haven't completed, we may bring back to you at that point. And then looking ahead to 2022 and what that docket might include. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will stop and see if there are any other, any other questions.
So Commissioner Gustafson.
Thanks, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. My question is about the March discussion of the bonus incentives in Canyon Park. It would be really great to have the students present before that because that will inform that discussion. But even if the students can't attend in person, would they be able to provide a report or some documentation in our packets that we could review to set us up for the beginning of the incentive discussion?
Yes, I will continue to, to work with them and hopefully we will be able to get them to present. I, I can send you the report at that time. I was waiting because I thought it'd be better to send it to you just before they were doing the presentation, but that's a good point. If we don't have them scheduled, then we'll at least provide you with that, ahead of that meeting.
Other commissioner comments, questions?
Did we miss anything? It's a pretty comprehensive list, but I want to make sure that we didn't miss anything from.
Thanks, this is Karsten. I wanted to ask about the capital facilities element. I know that there have been some adjustments to that as of last night. Does that need to go through commission at all? Or are there any anticipated changes to the capital facilities element that need to be brought?
That is a great question. The capital facilities element is part of the comprehensive plan, and it does require amending from time to time. It's treated a little bit differently under state law than other elements in terms of how, when it can be updated. So I'll have to look into that and see. I, I don't know if the changes that were made last night would require us to go in and, and make those changes. It might be something that we just fold into the annual amendments that would come back to you in the fall. Similar to what we did initially on the fire stations, because they were not part of the, the CFP that was adopted in 2015. So we, we did bring that through the, the commission in 2019, and we had taken it to the council for adoption to add the fire station rebuilds in December. And that was part of the package that was appealed by the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. So that is still pending.
Thank you.
Other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Aldrichs.
On the topic on cottage housing, it came to my memory that, of one particular development here in Bothell, which might be, well, unincorporated area of, of a cottage development called Songaya. Are you familiar with that? So it's over up on about 39th, north of 228. And it's absolutely a cottage development type place. It's called a cohousing community, so it's, it's shared property and, and people buying into it. But definitely the way they've laid out the property is very much like a cottage housing development. And so I'm wondering if that might be in it. Well, I also know that they have plans and wish to expand and create, at least build more on the property that they have, if not expand to new properties. So I'm wondering if that might be a good connection for the city to better understand cottage housing developments.
What was, what was the name and location on that again, please?
Songaya, let me spell it for you. S-O-N-G-A-I-A. And 39th Avenue, is that southeast? Yep.
Maybe 230th?
Yeah, close, yeah.
Yeah. I, I am familiar with that. In fact, we had a, an intern working with us three, four years ago that, that lived there, I think still does live there. There's another somewhat similar development just to the north of Bothell. Songaya is within our planning area. The other one, which I believe, if memory serves, is Fairwater Creek. Along, kind of on the North Creek corridor, just north of 190th, 2nd, I believe. So yeah, there are examples around and, and and I guess more maybe traditional cottage housing developments. There are, well, there's at least one in Kirkland that I'm aware of in the Rose Hill neighborhood. I think there's at least one other. But yeah, I am familiar with some of the ones that have been done in the region. And then there's a, a number of them on Bainbridge and maybe Whidby as well.
Yeah, one of the early ones is in Langley. Yeah, and I think there's a one or two of the early, when I say early ones, I think these were popular back in the late 80s into the mid 90s is when they started to, to come about, at least that I'm aware of. And I think that that's when a lot of the cities in this area started changing their codes to allow for them. And I know Redmond was one of the first ones, and they've only had a couple that I'm aware of that have developed. There may be others. But that, that would be part of the research that we would do in that missing middle task that we've identified. Find out more about what's been done elsewhere, what's been working, what's been most effective. And, and, you know, what are the types of things that we would focus on then to make sure we get the most out of the, the effort that we put into it?
One other thing, technically you could do cottage housing in, in Bothell. There, in some zones, especially with the cluster housing ordinances, you could get something that would at least resemble cottage housing development. But the, the particular conditions that would need to come together to make that possible are, are, are limited. So, but it is definitely something worth looking into.
I'm assuming, Dave, we would allow those under a PUD?
Yeah, probably a cluster housing PUD. We looked at it when United Methodist Church up on West Hill came to us looking at what they could do with the undeveloped part of their property. And that was one, one possibility. It didn't quite get them what they, what they wanted to have in terms of affordable housing. But, but there, there are ways to make it work in Bothell. But there certainly would be ways to make it easier to do in Bothell as well.
Other questions, comments?
If I may, this is, again, there was a mention of public outreach around the GDC overlay, and I, I meant to mention that. When we work on citywide amendments, we don't, we're not required to, to do the note, kind of public notification that we do for project applications. But when we're dealing with a, a code amendment that, that affects a relatively confined, defined area like the GDC three-story overlay, we typically do, and I think we're actually required, in this case would be required to do the standard notification of all residents within 500 feet of that, that area. And we, for the notification process, we'd probably do, apply that to the entire three-story overlay, even if in the end we might limit it to just a portion of it.
So if I could just wrap up this item, Mr. Chair. I, I didn't hear any, any consensus from the commission about any changes or specific comments. We'll cer, we'll certainly relay there was. We'll certainly relay there was discussion about cottage housing and missing middle, and talk about that in the context of the items that we have on the docket. But beyond that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't, I didn't really hear anything else.
It looks to be an interesting year, and I think the commissioners are looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
So did we want to review the 2020 accomplishments? It was certainly included in the packet. One thing we could do is kind of talk about what worked and looking forward, any, any changes you might be interested in making as we get back this year's work program.
Yeah, I think just looking for some feedback from the commission, just in terms of the overall process, you know, if there were things that, that were, that you thought worked well in terms of how we provided information or what level of information was provided, if there are other things that you thought would have been nice to have more, or, you know, was the discussion too much or not enough? That kind of feedback would be helpful as we move forward and bring items to you for the, from the docket for, for this year.
And a couple of things from my perspective as Chair, I think it's important that we go through the findings and recommendations as we move something forward in a fair amount of detail. Sometimes I wonder how much detail to go into and things, the code itself, and there are pages and pages of code. I don't think we have to go through, I would hope we don't go through line by line on that, but I don't want to skip over something other commissioners feel is important. Thoughts on balance there?
Well, and I'll just, I'll just say what, what we try to do as staff, because like you said, when there are a lot of amendments, particularly if there are a lot of the same amendments in different parts of the code, or, or what are relatively, we would consider relatively minor amendments, either housekeeping, or it's not a, probably a substantive issue, or we don't think it's a major issue for the commission, is we'll try to focus on those things that we think are more critical for the, for the commission to provide feedback on, so that we're not overwhelming you with a whole bunch of information and discussion about every single detail that's in there, because some of it can get fairly weedy, if you will. But by the same token, if we're not talking about something, we're not focusing on something, and that is important to a commissioner, you know, we're, we're expecting that you will, you'll raise that issue up and, and get input from the rest of the commission. So then staff knows if we need to do more work on that, or, or do a little bit more explanation. That's our approach to it.
Thanks, Chair. This is Carsten. Just to respond to you, I think that, yeah, in general, I like how code amendments were laid out, and we did go through the weeds a little bit, but I think that we did it for a good reason. And I appreciated how staff laid out some of the more pertinent items, and, you know, in the code references, they put boxes that would describe, you know, here is what we're considering, here's what is really important to get out of this, just to draw attention to those possible changes and stuff. And I, just to give total feedback for 2020 stuff, I really am surprised, data-driven, and I really liked, Dave, your Excel charts on parking minimums, and also the Excel charts on downtown code amendments when we were looking at open space. That was really helpful to see everything laid out that way. It's a lot different when we're talking about, you know, what, what does 10% look like different when you see it in print? So that was really helpful to me. The other thing that I, is kind of pertinent to this discussion too, is I really appreciated Commissioner Gustafson's comments about the cultural anchors. That was really critical, and your research and background information is really helpful to get. I appreciate the work that you did for that, and I want to encourage other commissioners to do that type of work too, if they see something that kind of clicks with them, or something that they really want to investigate further. So I know our bylaws have a process set up for subcommittees, and I don't know if that's something that we would really want to explore or not, but yeah, for sure, people who are interested in more detail, go for it.
Yes, we have formed subgroup, subcommittees on not a lot of occasions, but a couple of occasions. So that is, that is something that can happen. We have to be cognizant of public meetings, considerations. Certainly, if commissioners do want to pursue some things, that's a tool we have. Something, something else that I sometimes struggle with is how long to let a meeting go on, and now, full disclosure, having been on the staff side of making calls to commissions, and, and I'll tell you the worst ones for meetings on Vashon Island, when you know when the last ferry is. I, I don't want to, I want to respect staff's time and balance that with when you stop an item and restart it, you also lose some continuity. So that's what goes through my mind when I ask, do we want to continue to, continue? So I don't have a suggestion or any, I just raised this an issue, but when we do extend an item, that's some of the thought processes I have. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. Amanda Olson here. So Commissioner Kurt's comment reminded me, I did like the charts, but, so thank you, Dave. But my favorite thing is the photo examples of projects that kind of fit within the code that is proposed. That's really helpful for me in trying to get a sense of like what would be built under this code. So like in Canyon Park, we had a lot of those with duplexes and triplexes, we had a lot of those photos. Visuals are super helpful for me, so I've appreciated those in the last year.
I would second that from Commissioner Olson. Those, those visual examples are really important, and also just to see the, the amount of, of creativity, I think, that can go into what fits under those codes, that you can get a wide range of looks and styles that way. So I've also very much appreciated that. And to Commissioner Kurt's point about subcommittees, I know that we've had some experience doing that in this past year when we were looking at diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'm wondering what other kinds of subcommittees might be formed by commissioners, and, and how might we be able to contribute more to the planning commission in that way?
Well, when, when Bruce retired, there was a group forum, write a letter to council supporting bringing on another planner as soon as possible. There was a group, a briefing, a group on that issue. That's the other one I recall.
That's, that's the only one I'm aware of as well. And I, I don't know what the intent was when that was put into the, the bylaws. Different commissions are set up differently, and they have, sometimes they have different roles and different responsibilities. The, the, the primary and fundamental role of this commission is to be advisory to the city council. So I, my, my read of how that would be used, how subcommittees might be used with this planning commission, would be something that may be task-specific and time-limited. So if there's a particular issue, and there's a, you know, a minority number of commissioners, so we don't have a quorum that would like to, to do some additional work on that as a small group and bring that back to the commission for consideration, I could see something like that happening. I think standing subcommittees would be much more of a challenge, particularly for the We just, we don't have the capacity to staff an ongoing subcommittee of the commission. And I know it may not start out that way, but I can tell you from experience that it would most likely end up that way. So that would be my, my one caution about that. I think if you've got the task-specific, time-limited type of, of a project, and you've got two or three commissioners that, that want to dive a little deeper in that and bring that back to the commission, I, I think that could be effective and helpful.
From my perspective, forming a subcommittee actually does release us a little bit from the, the kind of commission rules of, of how many people you can talk to. I generally follow the rule of if I'm going to talk about a topic with somebody on the commission, I talk to one person about that topic. And so then I'll talk to another person about a different topic. And when we formed the subcommittee, I was unable to talk to two people, and that was, that was more productive in, in that sense. And so there, there are some advantages of being able to form, to form a group like that to take on a project, but I appreciate your point to kind of time limited and, and focus and scope. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perhaps a different, or an example of when a subcommittee might be useful, I would think if we wanted to draft a specific recommendation, a recommendation that was running between meetings, I find wordsmithing something as a group can be rather challenging and use a lot of time, but if we have a general idea of a recommendation we want to be included, I, I think it would be useful to send some folks through. Again, it would be very specific, and it would be, you know, prepared for the next meeting. That's an example where I could see it being useful and, and really benefit the commission from its use of time as well. So other thoughts? Commissioner Kurt, was that an intent or a second thought?
It, it wasn't intent, but if someone else has thoughts, I would be happy to.
All right, ahead.
Oh, Commissioner Gustafson, did you have something?
We have time for both.
Please go.
Thank you, my Chair Kurt. I wanted to maybe put forward some ideas that may or may not be practical, that may be worth thinking about for the future year. One idea is something that I heard the students were discussing is something called an equity pause, and I'm really not sure how that works, but when they come and speak with us, that might be something to build into the year, just having pauses throughout where we stop and think, oh, who are we leaving out of this discussion? Also, it might also be interesting to apply that pause to our group. I know I always raise my hand and say, oh, wait, no, somebody else needs to talk because I spoke a lot, and I really want to thank our Chair for doing a really good job at organizing that. I don't know if there's any way to make sure that we hear from people to the extent that they want to be heard, someone who speaks a lot.
I would urge all commissioners to bless their opinions. We do value the input, and sometimes the best feedback is feedback we don't agree with, just to make this thing, so consider that as well. Who knows, one day we may be all together in a room. So other, other comments? So Dirk Codman, did you get feed, useful feedback there? Oh, Mr. Aldrich.
Was Chair Kurt going to take his turn before we move on?
Okay, thank you. This is Carsten. I, I didn't want to extend this too far, but one of the things that I really appreciated my first year on commission was meeting with other boards and commissions and city council. And I think that, of course, we lose out on Zoom or on WebEx when we have these, these things, and it's mandated that we have these meetings and we continue the progress on planning, but it's something that I kind of grieve the loss of that connection that we've had with the community. And I'm hoping that as maybe we get more comfortable with virtual meetings, or whatever the new normal is, we can think of some creative ways to connect back with the, either the council, or, I know they, they didn't want to do any more liaison positions with, with boards and commissions, and I recognize that their time is limited, but that is something that was kind of missing this year as opposed to my first.
Mayor Olson.
Thank you. Commissioner Kurt's long-awaited for comment kind of reminded me of something. I think it's interesting that I feel like a lot of residents of Bothell don't know that our meetings are happening unless they take an interest in an agenda item, whether it's something in their neighborhood or something they've heard about in, from a neighbor or a community group. I would love to see more of an effort to sort of proactively share, even just on social media, like the days and times of the meetings, what the topics are, and that, and that kind of goes for all commission meetings that can be accessed virtually, whether it's planning, city council. I, those are the ones I know are on BCTV, but I, I think that's really important, like it's, I was thinking about this in the context of the state legislature is just super accessible this year when they're in virtual session, because you can just sign up to talk and you don't have to go to Olympia. We're so accessible over Zoom, I, I guess I feel like we must be missing some people who maybe would have an interest if they kind of, if it got put in front of them, like, hey, the planning commission's meeting, and we're talking about these three things in Canyon Park. Do you go to Canyon Park? You might want to tune in or even say something. So the, 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 the marketing person in me, because that's what I do during my day job, is, is coming out already, but I, I think it would be great to just see more of an effort to get what is being discussed sort of in front of your average resident before there's something they're upset about to come to a meeting for. So that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
In my prior life, I, I did work on siting public facilities, and I can tell you that's one of the great challenges, is getting people interested. I used to joke, we're just going to put out locations of where solid waste facilities are going to be to stir people up, because they never come during process and planning discussions. They show up at the end of the process when the map comes out and it's next to their house. It's, it's a challenge, and I'm sure staff would welcome marketing advice on how to reach out.
I would second that. In all of my time in planning, that has always been a challenge. And, and Chair Kiernan's right, the people don't pay attention until it's, it's about to happen. So, and, and that's, it's incumbent on us to, to do a better job of, of getting the word out earlier and figuring out how to reach people and get them engaged. One, just a couple of follow-up thoughts I had from, from some of the suggestions here. I think when we do start meeting in person again, and I'm still hopeful we will at some time in my lifetime or my tenure, other places I've worked, the planning commission would occasionally have meetings in other parts of the city, particularly if there was an issue that was relevant to that subarea, for example. So, you know, and we had meetings, we had open houses, and we had other meetings in Canyon Park, and I know several of you attended those meetings. We can also have the commission host meetings in different parts of the city. That's, again, something for the future to think about, and that's a way for you to hear more directly from, from the public. And, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can get, get the word out and, and get people more engaged. I had another thought, and it escaped me, so it may come back later.
I have one follow-up on Carsten's comment about meeting with other boards and commissions. Depending on the scope Depending on the scope of the shoreline boards' meetings, there may be an opportunity or even a need for a joint meeting with planning commission, so that, that could be coming up in the fall.
And that's a good point, Dave. And we, we do look for those opportunities. They're, they're few and far between, but we want to make sure that we have a, a specific purpose when we do those joint meetings, so it's not just let's get together and share stories. As interesting as that might be, there's, there's a little bit of effort involved in, in making those things happen.
Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to say, I'm really interested in the idea of having meetings in different parts of the city. I, gosh, I'm trying to remember if it, I think it was yesterday during the council meeting, someone talked about having an open house at Frank Love. I went to Frank Love, so I was like, oh, that's so cool. But I like the idea of kind of showing up in different community places just to, to have more conversations with the community, just to hopefully drive engagement. But I also realized to Kevin and Mike's points, definitely it can be hard to reach people. I think I also remember it before I was on the commission, when I was very interested in some of these topics. So I would go to the meetings. I, I totally get that maybe not everybody follows land use as a hobby. So, fair point.
And logistically and legally, we have some challenges with that because these meetings are recorded and they are broadcast. So, I'm sure there are ways that we can work around those. But there's, there's more effort involved in doing those meetings in other places. But like I said, we've done it other places I've worked and, and it can be done. And I think it can be done effectively when there's a particular topic or, or issue that needs to be discussed.
Okay, any other feedback for Mr. Alderks?
Jenny Alderks here. And this is not feedback, this is a request that if we are nearing kind of our halfway point, if we could get a bit of a break before resuming.
Okay. After this, I don't think we have too much more substantive.
I was going to say, I, I don't, yeah, there's, it's up to the commission if, how much longer you want to continue. And I would add, just in terms of staff feedback, just because we have three hours allotted, we don't have to take three hours. Just my own personal observation, that's all. But yes, Mr. Chair, in response to Commissioner Alderks, the only other item, I've just got a few things under staff announcements and really nothing else for the agenda this evening. This has been very helpful feedback. Thank you.
So, to close this item, I would just say that as commissioners, we should all also keep in mind that we are representatives of the community. So, trying to reach out and get feedback from others and bring some diverse opinions, even if they're not necessarily our own, I think would be of value. So, with that, do we want to take a brief break and come back and finish it up? Or do we want to power through? So, I'll just ask in favor of a break. Let me know. One, two. I think we'll respect the few that want a break, who may really want a break. So, can we do five minutes, make it a quick one and come back and finish? I see nodding of heads. So I've got 7:30 or online. Five minutes, we'll see you all back.
Mr. Chair, did you want to talk about the February 17th meeting as well?
Yeah, yes, I figured we'd do that. I already laid the groundwork for that.
Just let me know when you're ready and I'll give Wes the sign.
I see three more commissioners still dark. So on staff times and public meetings, I suppose you could sense you could tell how the Ashon Council helps about staff, where they put you on the agenda. Because the last ferry leaves at 9:30 and the people they didn't like, they always scheduled last so they could watch them swab. Speaking of one more commissioner.
All right. We are reconvening the February 3rd meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission. Our break lasted a little longer than anticipated due to some technical issues, but we are back. So with that, I believe we have finished our study session regarding planning docket and calendar and process. So I think we can move on to old business. Is this where we would like to talk about the next meeting?
We can, yes.
Or else reports from staff. Is there any old business?
I had no old business, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so reports from staff.
So I've got just a few items this evening. Just a reminder for the commission and the public, the board and commission applications are due on February 12th. So that's coming up. We do have openings on the planning commission as well as the Landmark Preservation Board and the Shorelines Board. The also we have APA membership coming up, renewals coming up for a couple of commissioners. And I know we've added some other commissioners since we last did this. So currently we have Chair Kiernan and Vice Chair Curd are both members. And as part of your membership, you get a magazine every month that we're now having sent to your home address, I believe, where you're actually receiving them on a more regular basis. And we can sign up other commissioners if you're interested in being a planning commission member. You do have access to other resources on the APA website, American Planning Association. That's the national organization of, last I checked, over 40,000 members. Professional planners, lay planners, just people that are interested in planning issues. And it's a fairly broad range of issues that that are included in that. So if any of the commissioners would like like us to sign you up as a as a commission member, we can do that. And I just need to know from you if you're interested and we will take care of that. So I see Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Alderks and Commissioner Gustafson. Okay. We will add the three of you and I'm assuming the other two commissioners want to continue. Is that correct? Okay. So we will have these sent to your home address, but we will use your city email. Just so you know, that's where you'll get your email from from APA and you will get email from APA, I can tell you.
Okay, other anything else?
The only other item I had was a discussion with the commission. If you would like to, we can cancel the February 17th meeting. Really, the only item we have is the student presentation. And since I haven't heard from them and I don't, at this point, I don't know if we would get something from them if they'd be ready for the 17th. So we can bring them on to the March meetings.
Given our notice requirements, there really is a time certain which we have to lock in the agenda. So that would come on as pretty quick.
We would need to send out a notice of cancellation, yes.
So how do the commissioners, Mr. Alderks?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Alderks here. For the parents on the commission who have children in North Shore School District, that week is midwinter break. So those of us with kids might appreciate that week off.
Commissioner Olson.
Thanks. I would second what Commissioner Alderks said and just add that if, you know, if it doesn't, the students are going to be available, then then let's just cancel it. I'm sure staff could find something cool to do with their time, too. So sounds good to me.
I don't know if it's necessary, but if we could have a vote on that, Mr. Chair, a motion and a second and a vote.
So is there a motion to cancel the next meeting and defer the item to a subsequent meeting? Mr. Olson.
I move to cancel the February 17th meeting and move any agenda items to a subsequent meeting at staff's pleasure.
Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Gustafson. I see a second and a head now, but you're muted, so I'm going to assume we're suspended.
Second, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion around that motion to cancel the next meeting and defer items to unschedule them? Seeing none, all in favor of canceling the next meeting? It is unanimous. So the motion carries. We will cancel the next meeting, can send out the notice of cancellation. And that would mean our next meeting will be March 3rd.
Correct.
And okay.
And that's all I had this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Reports from members. Anything to our attention? Looking across the screen and seeing no indications of reports. This that means there is no further business. So being no further business, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Olson was quickest on the draw.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Curd.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning? All right, at 7:50, March, February 3rd, we will adjourn this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you all, and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
You too. Take care.
Good night.